Project, which we have to do for one more year, and I submitted that. Quite simply, everything is, looks very good up there. We don't have any bare soil or anything like that, even with the dry summer. All the, who actually, I took photos, actually page three of the report shows different species of plants that I've identified that are part of the original seeding, that's part of erosion control and all that, so all of those are identified in there in the report as well. The report also shows progression from the original, you're saying all the way through to now, so in the past, I didn't have no problem with it, so I will be able to say anything from them this year. Also, last week Larry asked me to build one of our structures on the west county, or excuse me, east county line, or eight hundred east, between two hundred and three hundred. W I five, is the structure number. Madison County posted a ten ton load limit, and, uh, which it needs to be. And it's, I went back out and looked at it, it's, it really, it's gotten a lot worse shape since the last time we had, uh, looked at it. Both the wind walls on the west side of the structure are, they crack all the way down through into the foundation, it's undermined. And as Larry's talked about in the past, the head wall, or the, uh, parapet wall that's on the west side of the structure, literally is completely cracked off of the structure, and I think it's a darned relative great. So, it's a structure we're going to look to quickly kind of replace next year. Madison County, we've already talked with Chuck Lester over there, and he's willing to help out on it, same way we did on the other structures, we'll come up with it.
You said it was north or south? It's a good thing. North or south?
Yes, north of two hundred north. Between two hundred and three hundred north. It's about, you know, just four or five hundred feet north. Everything else seems to be moving on fine, the Campbell and Mitchell West Project is fine. We, uh, are looking probably at that in September of, uh, next year, for sure. In a good, probably wouldn't have much construction for the end of next year, maybe move there, put it in the next year, that's about it. Make construction to be available for, for soon before year. And with the landfill, everything looks great out there. Larry's guys just voted, no issues going on with the landfill. And then Larry and I have been monitoring the county roads around the windmill of the project, and everything seems, there's some issues with some potholes and stuff that we're going to be setting up another meeting with the department of white construction and talking to them about, I mean, I'm not fixed up with that. Other than that, everything seems to be doing okay, so.
Everything's going well, so you're not in white construction again?
It seems to be, uh, the white construction is very responsive when we ask them, do something that, uh, they helped out in that structure on one hundred south, between five hundred and six hundred east, they went ahead while we had Tristler Construction build the head wall, white construction came out, backfilled the whole thing, put erosion control blankets on in, through the ditch area and stuff like that, and did a really nice job of getting care of that. So, they've been very responsive. You know, and like last week, I noted for a couple spots where they had, uh, taken some of their truck driver, or actually it was a crane operator, I threw it through an area that was muddy, cracked it all up and down the caddy road. So, one other guy, Tom, we were about that, and he said, no, they'll make sure it's taken care of it. I checked, they're always very careful to take care of it, so. Any questions for me? Can we just take a look at?
Have you had any reports on the Rock Hill project?
I have nothing back to provide yet, other than they received the information. So, uh, which is, assuming everything is good, you know, it's good, it's kind of like, once, like this report for this, uh, Campbell ditch, I honestly think someone gets the report and says, they did the report, checks on it. So, I'm hoping that's kind of, they have a knowledge, they received it, so that's really it.
Is it not that we'll clear it up?
Not yet. I think we won't be clear of another, two, uh, two more testing.
Will you go to the timetable?
Yes.
Do you want to clarify?
Yeah, I, I'm sure we'll have to do the two more, quarterly reports. To let you know, also, uh, E T C and Associates out of Landville did, uh, at the last groundwater testing, or groundwater monitoring, uh, as they also went out and did their first methane monitoring, because the plan was accepted by I D M, so they did their first methane monitoring. I haven't seen any report on that as of yet, so. And, that's it. Thanks for any other questions? Sheriff?
All right, uh, I went up to, I got two quotes, that's all I got back from Yachty Brothers and P R Schroeder for the water heater, and I went ahead and had Schroeder's start the process with it because it was ten thousand, and Yachty Brothers was, he was very cheap to bid on that, saying it could have been a thousand BTUs, hundred gallon tanks, so. Went ahead and did that. I think the Earth Festival, Betty and the security group there did a really nice job Friday night of vacuuming, and the E M A, get the people out of the streets with the, with the storms came through. It was nice to be able to not have anybody out there to turn, a couple kids live, and they did a good job getting ready for it and stuff, so. Tell them they did a real nice job getting that done. Uh, I wanted to say, Hercule Debes here, I think there's a lot to be, I think we're trying to talk about for the festival, yeah.
Hey, before we start that, I'd like to compliment Chuck Bell on that L P tank, door turn at Hobbs, and you had all your deputies out there, and I think the E M A was a very good addition, and I thank your deputies as an excellent job.
Thank you.
Chuck, Chuck was okay, said, Ben, keep him, Carl.
We're going to counsel him, we'll be asking those boppers.
I would have said that.
But it was very noticeable, and it was a very good addition.
Well, they helped us out tremendously, you know, once they start getting that back into play where they have four, five, six, seven, eight people again, it relieves our deputies to have to do those things, put five, six, seven on the scene, other things going on at the same time.
How many?
Forty. I got there again. Now we're supplying this, climbing a little slower, but last week we have, we're back up. Point seven. Point seven.
Well, John, you're right, this is going to go a little bit later, but since you're here, you mentioned that, what are your thoughts on the, uh, full closing?
I have no problem. I tried to drive through there last year, I'll be honest, I did, the sheriff's vehicle, tried to drive through, it took me ten minutes to get from the east side of Atlanta to ninety. And that's in the sheriff's vehicle, people didn't care that I was coming down through there, they just stayed out there and walked. I think it's a safety issue, I have no problem with shutting the road, we don't have people in Atlanta, we'll make contact with Joe Robbins, I think he's a marshal down there, tell him if he can have somebody put the barricades out, pull them back, you know, give me the time to shut it down from this time to this time, because we need to get that in the paper, make people aware of it, I'll call them, we're going down Hamilton County, and if I say the same thing, the county lines are going to be closed, Earth Festival at this time, I have a problem with that, we'll approve.
Uh, George, I just, I made out of the, it's a little, I just talked with Joe, he is on his way, he didn't realize.
I'm here.
Uh, everybody, Joe's here.
Hi, Joe.
John.
Yeah, we can just settle this right now, since everyone's here for that, what are we talking about, let's just take care of that people.
And, well, what time did you shut the road at?
Eight o'clock in the morning, that's when they normally shut it, Saturday morning.
Is that what they always did before?
Yes.
Eight o'clock till?
About six, I think.
Six o'clock?
We have six p.m. on that.
Six p.m., we have ground after six?
Yeah, it was after six, I was, I was trying to drive through there, tried to drive through, I would say seven, seven thirty, I'd go wait, I'd just say eight, eight. I mean, I tried to do that for six o'clock, my try to drive down to there last year.
And how long has that festival run on your busy nights?
Officially, it's on six o'clock, but people hang around, especially on Saturday. Sunday, then you have mad accidents. Saturday is the, is a critical day, in my opinion. So, if you have eight to eight, I think that'll be wonderful.
So, there have been years that the road was closed?
Sorry?
Did they, there have been years that the road was closed, when did they cease doing that?
Last year was the first year that I know of.
That was not long ago?
Correct.
Is there any reason why?
I'm not sure. Linda Langley lives in Tipton, uh, and she is kind of associated with the Earth Festival, and that's why I asked her to come to show that we have support on, on both sides of the county. Why it wasn't closed last year, I don't know, I was not on the council on that time.
So, and Linda will provide the barricades?
Yes.
The physical barricades?
She's not sure yet, no.
I'm asking for Tipton County, if the county highway can bring barricades for, counties nine, it'd be like four or eight to.
They're blocking over Walnut Street to Central Street.
You should use that, Larry. The county highway will supply that, Tipton County, not the world's supply, there, and the land, that you're.
They only block that off of Walnut Street, I think to Central Street, right in there, that way the cars come down like the internal county way, and they park out in the fields and, uh, I think it's traffic, they only block it off that, along that, it's still high.
It's not a big stretch. It's, uh, kind of like we do here on, for Madison.
So, John, that is, uh, that's our call, you're sure, it's our call.
That's your call, and either, either county can do it, since it's county line, but I figure since we have to take care of the, that's our responsibility. I will call Sheriff Bell, let him know, put, let his guys know also.
So, really, that's some of the responsibility, you can take the, the board commissioners, you don't have to do all that.
I think you just have.
Linda will agree from nineteen to what road is?
Oh, Central.
Central, from Walnut to Central.
Oh, from Walnut to six.
Yeah.
And that will be on Saturday and Sunday, can you give me the dates, please?
Twenty second, twenty third of September.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that, uh, the county is, will agree to close Tipton County line, Zoll County line, six hundred south, from what is known as Atlanta Street, Walnut to Central, on September twenty second and twenty third, from eight a.m. to eight p.m. due to the traffic congestion with the Atlanta Earth Festival.
Sir, we have a motion second on forward then to grant permission of closing the county line between Walnut Street and Central Street on September twenty second and twenty third from eight a.m. to eight p.m. I would say that, question period.
If you got that, you'd have to think of the board, see if they, if they put in the briefs or something on the side to make sure people are aware of it, and all, a lot of guys know, but Sheriff doesn't know that. I don't have anything else, I think Hercule Debes.
Are we going to wait? Are we waiting on Spike?
Yeah.
Okay.
You guys are good, we're good.
John, is Jackie up?
Take a look.
Would you like her?
Yes.
Good luck.
Yeah, hopefully we'll have a little bit better weather.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You ready, Cammy?
We're waiting on someone else who will be left.
Great, that's great. Um, I have nothing in writing today, um, but I'm coming before, I have with Mike and Beth Roach from the council, and we've left the officials, like the auditor and the treasurer, to discuss where we wanted to move, we have thirty hours left, and I am through two thousand and lush finding the differences between the auditor's office ledgers, the office ledgers and the cash flow. And I'm now working through, finding the differences and bringing the money back, not by month to May, and we're only off a hundred and ninety-two dollars between the ledgers and the cash flow at this point. And I know there are changes coming next year, so I asked everyone to get together and see what direction you wanted me to go, um, on these last thirty hours, do you want to spend these thirty hours trying to train the staff here to continue what I have and move forward, or do you want to increase the hours on the contract to move forward? And it was a consensus of, of those four people in the meeting that, that they would rather extend the contract, um, some hours. We have the issue of the ledgers, we still have, we'll text the tax that needs to be at, we still have the money that needs to be at, um, we still have the settlement account that needs to be at, it's not, I know it's out of balance for last year, and so there are issues out there still. And, um, both office holders felt that they didn't have the staff time to do it, so they're pretty swamped and overloaded, and Linda are still working on, currently about the same one, the cash flow delay, and so the group kind of decided that maybe we should come and ask for an additional two hundred hours in the contract, which would include settlement training, get settlement done, half stoppers and the settlement. So, that's what I'm having to do today. Beth Roach is going to be here this morning, but she called me on my way and said that things come up, and she's got personal obligations at home, and so, but she wanted to let you know that she is in favor of an addition of two hundred hours, and she intends to talk to the council about that on Wednesday at their budget meetings. So, I'm here today to see what direction, which direction this floor has to go.
You like, you laying out the information, the suggestions that you did, everyone?
Yeah, it was definitely unanimous.
That, that you moved forward with extension of the contract?
No, I was also brought up by Beth, that this extension really would, would balance hiring another person, bringing another person to the courthouse to complete the work, because the current staff just doesn't have the time to do that.
My opinion on this is, we had a critical time because of our budget hearings coming forward. I have found, you have found multiple errors in more than one office, which I think you have done excellent bringing this up. We did get schooled for okaying a contract without having proper money appropriated. If the council wants to appropriate additional monies, then I will vote to extend your contract. The council showed us that they weren't willing for us to go ahead with our budget or trying to get a directive, because they told us we have to make use of what we have.
Well, I, I believe that was going to bring that up with the council meeting.
If Dan wants to ask and get appropriation corrected, then I would, I would have a problem, but I will not vote to extend a contract, and I concede the emergency. If the council wants to buy into it, then I would vote for it.
Well, I would agree with Phil, and it's quite alarming to me to realize that, you know, we're talking now fifty thousand dollars of county money to correct errors of reputation.
It's more than one official, she has found, there have been multiple offices, she has found needing correction, so it's, you can't say it's an elected official, it's elected officials.
But, you know, I guess what I'm wondering too, is where is it, you know, how, how do you know then, I mean, two hundred dollars aren't enough, there's a question? I can't promise you, no.
It's one comment, it's one thing, and it's valid, it's the fact that if you're stopped where you are, then the thirty thousand that you spend, most of that's wasted.
Well, I was.
And, and the comment about comparing this, or, if this is one employee, I mean, yes, it's a lot of money, but the thing is, we can close right, we can get them corrected, because if we stop now, telling you we're not going to be, get a better off, make it little, and, uh, a lot, you need to follow through and go complete.
The other thing that, that Beth asked for, and I'm going to work on, is she wanted to know how much to spend, how much time to spend on training, and how much time to spend on the actual works, and I'm going to go back and look at what we've done, but I can tell you, when I was in the office, there was a lot of time that was answering questions, I wasn't training per se, but it was answering questions in a manner to learn as they came up. So, I'm going to go back and try to estimate those times for the council, so that they'll know about how much time they had for training. Well, I guess this is the wake-up call, because I, I do think that there has to be a time to wake up the act of strength, and, and, uh, fifty thousand dollars for me makes a call, but, um, I will agree with Phil that if, uh, if the council wants to appropriate out the general, uh, five thousand dollars, the less, the less harm.
I don't care what fund they get it from, if they appropriate the money, then I will work on it, and I can see.
So, you don't have to wait for that?
If they want to, if they want it done, I think they will appropriate it without a doubt.
I mean, they, we took the initiative last time, but we knew, we knew we were going into budget hearing, and we were in trouble, serious trouble. We took the initiative then, and we got shot down, and got scolded. If they want to take the initiative, appropriate the money, I'm going to work with them, so as a recommendation, that's what we're going to do, but I'm not giving it right now.
Okay, what I'm going to do then, is I have thirty hours, I'm going to be two weeks, and I'll come back in two weeks. I'm not doing any work in that two weeks. Take a direction on how we're going to handle those last thirty hours, is that agreeable?
That's my, that's your suggestion?
Well, I mean, I don't want to spend thirty hours and then not be able to turn it over to somebody if that's the direction that we're using to go.
I think it's your, uh, uh.
Thanks.
Yeah, Spike's on the, Jackie? Yeah, you tell, I see he's coming in, thank you. Spike, you're up.
Hi.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good morning.
Good, thank you. Good morning.
Sheriff, Sheriff. Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, we wanted to come in this morning after, uh, the presentation, public presentation of the master plan, and discussed it, and did it a couple nights, as you guys recall, and, uh, get an opportunity for, invited, faculty invited, uh, the commissioners and the county council, and so invitation from Mayor, from the city, and then of course the public, and I went to come. We advertised that to newspapers, so upon the notification that that was coming up. I think, all told, I think we had about forty people in two nights, different people, forty, forty-five people show up. And so after that, we wanted to come in this morning, and first of all, for those who don't know, our entire team is here, standing back here to the right is Doug Carter with R two A W, Joe Marak with R two A W, Gary Malone with U M Ball, with the financial, R two A W, Gethin Cole was helping with the, the jail side of the study, and to the far left is Mike Conlon with Architour, and he was working primarily on the courthouse piece of this, and also the historic piece of the, uh, the old, the old jail, uh, sheriff's department. So, uh, I think what we want to do first is just kind of open up, see if you guys have any questions, if you heard everything we had to say, everything we had to show, and, uh, and from there, just kind of see what we look for, any questions.
I think the, the only comments that I heard were, you know, some people that, when they first hear or opposed the idea of spending that much money or investing that much money, then when they hear the presentation, and the reason, the meaning behind it, then I think they start to have a change of attitude. One thing that you shared with us was the process of, of how do you go about a tax increase to pay for it, because that's what it's going to take to do it, and my only thought was that if we have to do that in such short order, as you were explaining, and Mike over that for other people here, that that would happen. But we need more consensus or more buy-in by the people who are going to be putting the bill. And so to try to do all that between now, here to September, and have that all done by November, having a, of our state representative, I don't think that's possible.
The, our thought was, first of all, I think the group that needs to hear this more than anybody else first is to go to the council and share the same information that we shared because there was a couple of people there, I mean, by March, a lot of them. And see what they think about it. And let them consider what's going on. And then from there, you guys will need to decide how to take this and communicate it because community awareness is always a part of what we discussed about, you got, you got to let people know what you're doing. And we did have the press there, some articles.
There's no press there the second night?
No.
No, but we did send an article out through the newspaper, write in the question, to summarize what...
So I feel the same time pressure that you do as far as, because we're really talking something in the hands of the legislature by December, I think. Gary, is that not right?
Well, you want to speak to lobbyists and the council, that's probably a difficult time for anyone to have that discussion with the legislature, to put a session again, to submit again, first of all.
So we're talking, discussing local legislature to, not just to, really just to inform them what we're doing, let them see, let them, to us demonstrate to them what really is your experience. And also to the council and then some public, some more public meetings to, to send out and see what the feedback is. We're, presentation is ready and I think it's to the point where we can do that fairly short order and get, give them... All, all I can tell you guys is what kind of feedback you guys can give.
A few people I talked to, I heard nobody say, did not agree that we do not need to do something. Nobody, nobody was having a business. But that's a lot of money to spend.
Well, it is, man. And you got to have more information out to more people and who knows who will come, who knows who will show up. But it's, it's our new deal is just to get it out there and get an opportunity to see it.
Well, if that's all you can do is to provide the opportunities, if they choose not to have, then that's their choice. But what is the downside then of waiting another year and presenting it to the legislature of two thousand thirteen as far as cost?
Well, cost, you're starting, we're starting to see cost come back up a little bit. So we feel like we've kind of hedged that to, to not knowing exactly where people are going to move. They probably enjoy, you can chime in on this if you like. I think one of the biggest things we can run into is some of the conditions in the jail where it hard to get any better.
Well, Gary, your presentation, didn't you talk about possibly waiting because of the way the interest rates are now, doing it now rather than wait another year would save us?
Well, the interest rates are at historic lows. And if I knew what interest rates are going to be in two years, I would have been retired many years ago. And that's obviously not the case. But, you know, and all of our numbers, we've assumed a six percent interest rate, which is very high. Last week, we sold bonds with Perry County, it's a twenty-year bond issue and the interest rate was thirty percent. So interest rates are at historic lows. So the numbers that we've shown, you can beat these numbers. That reserve has said that interest rates, that they would be working with interest rates in two thousand and fourteen at presidential elections, who knows? Interest rates are very unpredictable. But I think the sooner you go through the process, the more likely that you, it would be that you have lower interest rates. Not that if you pushed it off, you still wouldn't have low interest rates, but the burden of hands would turn to the...
Well, what we have to balance that out, weigh the, those two options there is one is trying to get the lowest interest rates that are available today versus, well, what would they be a year from now? Or maybe less, less than, less than, because this process really was started earlier than where we are now. Still, a year from now, first, is having the people that are going to pay the bill feel like that this was shut down in the throes. Because this isn't, to me, this being several million dollars and you decide to set it down over and it's a cost that you have to make this decision so short.
And that's kind of why you need to feedback from what people are saying. And it's, there's no preparation as far as we're concerned to do that. We're ready to do that. If you guys are willing to go forward with that, we're going to take the council and we'll schedule meetings publicly right after that. And get a couple, three of those done because we need, you have an opportunity to chime in.
What kind of attendance have you had at other meetings, at other projects similar to this?
Similar, all we have is...
Yeah. Low, low attendance. One thing I might add to that is, is the, you know, getting, again, to the opportunity like the low interest rates and the favorable construction costs, going to the legislature and getting this, this legislation introduced basically provides you the tool to be able to do it. It doesn't necessarily mean you're pulling the trigger. You have to pull the trigger right away to actually do it. So what I would recommend is maybe pursue a dual track to this. Go with the legislature and while we're going through that process, let's go through the community awareness process at the same time. Then, you know, if, if you don't get it approved, you know you don't have the option. If you do get it approved, that option is open for some period of time. It, it doesn't necessarily mean you absolutely have to do it just because you do get the legislation to be able to do it.
And also, if the general assembly was to work to approve the, the opportunity to the county to consider an additional income tax, it would be a maximum parameter and you could choose to enact the tax and lesser rate to, so there's still possibility of that.
Well, and that's another reason we need to put some more time in this, do that process. Because our numbers are pretty hypothetical at this point and we need to, you know, there's that potential sites to look at and more detail to look at as far as what needs to be done, particularly the courthouse and also the jail. The more information we know, the more we can look into exactly what, the more answers that we have, the better our numbers.
So it sounds as if we're not going to be locked into anything again, Joe. If we go ahead and take the traffic to the legislature, what the legislature, doesn't mean we have to go ahead and do it. So we might as well get that started. I don't see any downside to going ahead, having meetings and proceed forward and if there's a hitch or something, we can always stop.
That's right. The two things I think, picking back on what Joe said, two things, or two meetings probably need to happen very quickly. Just take your counsel and while we're doing it, sit down, talk to him, ask him this and go one-on-one with him. So that he understands what we're doing, why we are where we are. So the weekend, the council meeting, we've already got that informed, had to speak.
But do you just, your experiences with publicity, do you just typically go through the local paper as an article or, we really blast this as far as awareness that these meetings are going to...
Talk about your meetings, commissioner of your meetings, council meetings, other meetings, notices in the paper, whatever local news outlets you have.
I would think a project of this magnitude, you know, necessitate of being like a four inch building or something like that, that people would come to. Again, we've got the opportunities, the time may not show, that's what we're there for is to make decisions. So I think I would recommend that we, going back in, as Joe suggested, go on the dual traffic. Or John?
The contacts are, there's a lot of consensus. We can, you guys...
Yeah, I definitely...
I think county officials need to make that contact.
We could help you, I think, set it up and set up a meeting and Spike can help facilitate that, some of our representatives in the county should...
Okay. We can facilitate that. So...
It's Thursday, so I don't remember what day it is.
Oh, the council meeting. Eight, eight, seven. No, no, I'm sorry. Eighteen, eighteen, nineteen.
So...
Eighteen, September eighteen.
So I guess we're asking your commissioner to take it to the, to the council, to arrange a regular meeting and contact, make contact with the state legislature. Can I ask you to do this?
Twenty-nine weeks.
You got something to do?
I will.
I gave you all the copy of the, the presentation. I will leave a copy of it. Sheriff Lawson has a copy. And who do I need to contact as far as legislature?
It's probably very current. Because Gary, you shared in the meeting, the second meeting, the night that it should be a representative if you get one. Instead of a state senator.
I would also, I'd also suggest maybe speaking with your attorneys about lobbyists and that should be, they should help with that process and if you're going, going to pass. If that's who you choose to use, you want to contact them, get a lobbyist involved before that meeting occurs, just to make sure that you go through a proper process.
Which one of you guys will contact? I'll, I'll...
So that's the information on you and then once that initial contact's made, then you can set up the appointment that works for you.
And we'll notify you. And Barnes and Hornberger, you were with, they're called...
Maybe, maybe we'll be, so we'll be a lobbyist?
Well, there's a legal, I'm Gary, my name is, I'm going to answer this question, but you know, there's a legal function in all of this if you want to make sure that they know all the things about, that they know, that we've got better information of who we're talking to, our time schedules, and your local attorney, those guys, and also the lawyers.
So is that, or is that something else for someone else?
I would, I would call, I would speak with Greg and that, and that meeting, through their firm, they have a number of lobbyists that they've worked with, but I think it has a legislative process and so it makes sense that a lobbyist involved and that you have a...
Gary, from your experiences, how possible is that?
That's something you have to have a discussion with Horns and Hornberger. Those types of costs are all costly, we take into consideration for possible insurance of the mutual work and those costs.
Through, through the law.
How is it lower or service to move you now or your people?
Well, you're saying that they can maybe defer those?
I think I would have that conversation with them and see if they'd be willing to defer that again. I can't speak for their firm, like what they'd be willing to do, but that's what I'm asking.
Right, that's what they would have to do in our situation.
They don't have to work for free, do they? You can't prevent them. I'll be waiting for a call, we'll be able to talk later from it this week. Since I hear from you, we'll be right on. Okay, you're on. Greg, did you, did you share that, that one man that had a part to do with it? Did you, or did you pass that?
I actually talked to him, it was on the Golden Jefferson Street. I talked to him. It does look like we have potential of acquiring, possibility of a little more property at that site.
He gave, yeah. He gave an updated version of the property script.
Okay, good, I'll have a look at that.
For a first...
Yeah. I think it's around five minutes ago. It was just kind of where I had it in the middle. The west.
Animal big, right?
Right, yeah.
I figured you'd get that.
Parallels pay.
Thank you, Spike.
All right, we'll be waiting for your phone call. Thanks for your time and sorry to have a no schedule. Come on, we're sorry.
Spike, thank you for calling. Thanks for asking for that goal of plans, ask for Garrett, look and ask for the plans and she'll give that company to you.
Excellent, thank you.
It's not a more agenda. It's the Perry first. One minute. Ma'am, I don't know your name. Are you here for a specific?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here from Pro Alliance and I'm very excited to speak with you.
Greg, you want to bring us up to speak on the Pro Alliance, we just have someone waiting. Someone up to the microphone and...
Dana Herkey is here to speak to, to address us concerning a program through Pro Alliance to obtain natural gas for public buildings. I give it to her permission to assess the last year's use of natural gas so she could provide an estimate of potential savings for courthouse and structures in our county.
Thank you, good morning. My name is Dana Herkey, I'm here from Pro Alliance Energy. We are a natural gas supplier based in Indianapolis. Our parent companies are, one you may be very familiar with is your current gas utility, Vectren. We have recently partnered with the Association of Indiana Counties to provide discounted natural gas service to county buildings through a new program at Vectren where they will allow any county building regardless of size to transport natural gas. Historically, we've been doing this since nineteen ninety-six for large customers such as hospitals, manufacturing facilities, school systems. But recently with the new Vectren program, they've be regulated and removed all usage thresholds so that you would be able to transport under the new program. And basically, there are two reasons that you would want to even consider using Pro Alliance. Number one would be the savings on your natural gas purchases and number two would be the ability to set a budget. Currently, the county receives a natural gas bill very similarly to the way you do at home. It comes in the mail each month, you don't know what you use, you don't know what your price is. We offer the ability for you to lock in all or portion of your gas price for a minimum of one year up to three years. The first point that I brought up was savings. I've included on the third page of your packet at the bottom, you'll see a five and a half year history between the NYMEX market settlement, which is the basis for most of our pricing, compared to Vectren's rate, which is your current rate called two-twenty. In general, I would say there is about a dollar per decatherm difference between what the utility charges and what NYMEX market settlement price is each month. And the reason for this isn't that Vectren does a bad job of buying gas, they are regulated utilities. So they file a plan with the regulatory commission stating that we're going to lock in, for example, thirty percent of next winter's gas by April, we're going to do another twenty-five percent by June. Whatever, whatever plan they filed with the utility commission, they are bound to regardless of market conditions. Whereas the NYMEX market settlement price is much more fluid and you would have the ability to lock in a price when market, when the market hits a low rather than just wait to see what the utility has provided for you each month. And there are a few months on here that this plan would not have been beneficial. I'll just go ahead and call your attention to it, looking at May of two thousand eight, any time that the natural gas market shoots up pretty quickly. That month particularly, you'll know commodities went up because that's the price, that's the time all the price in your gas tanks became a lot more expensive. All commodities shot up pretty much overnight and the utility had already done some hedging in advance. So if you had market settlement price... has provided for you each month. And there are a few months on here that this plan would not have been beneficial, I'll just go ahead and call your attention to it, looking at May of two thousand eight, of any time that the natural gas market shoots up pretty quickly, um, that month particularly, you'll know commodities went up because that's the price, that's the time all the price in your gas tanks became a lot more expensive, all commodities shot up pretty much overnight, and the utility had already done some hedging in advance, so if you had market settlement price gas, that is one month out of five and a half years that you would have paid more, but in general, I would say that you're gonna save that dollar per decatherm. The second reason that you would want to pursue this, in addition to the savings that I just showed you, have shown you, is your budget, we give you the ability to lock in all or a portion of your gas at any point throughout your contract, and you do have the option to float with the NYMEX settlement, it's not been a bad way to go for the last couple of years. Um, as you may know, natural gas is one of the truly bright spots in the United States economy right now, it is everywhere, um, being in Indiana, we are beneficially located, there is natural gas to traditional sources from the Gulf of Mexico to the south, we're bringing natural gas in from the mid-continent in the Rockies, gas comes in from Canada, and now there is shale gas to our east, uh, Marcellus shale was discovered up in the Pennsylvania region and goes all the way south through Ohio where there's another shale field called Utica, so basically, north-southeast west, we're surrounded by natural gas and we have the pipelines to get it to you.
Dana, who takes care of helping the county hedge the price?
Uh, we have several options for you, um, you could put your auditor or a member of the commission in charge of being in contact with me directly, I tend to contact whoever my main person is and say, this is probably a good time for you to lock in a portion. Um, you have, you could lock in all upfront, right now, natural gas is near ten-year low, so I don't think you're gonna kick yourself for doing that upfront, um, but if you locked in, say, half now for the winter and you let the other half float, I would contact whoever your, your commissioner is that is in charge of this program and tell you when to lock in. Also, we will provide you as much market information as you want, you know your, your budgets and your stress points in your budget better than anyone else would, so if there's a price in the market that you know is kind of a panic point for you, um, we can provide you daily, weekly, monthly updates, um, we'll give you as much information as you need to help make that decision. We also have a managed buying program where we will, for about a one percent commission, um, handle your hedging for you, basically, we take your entire gas purchasing plan over a year and we divide it into however many business days there are, uh, if there are two hundred of them, we'll buy basically one, two-hundredth of your gas on a daily basis, so what this gives you is a nice moving average of where the market is without you having to have one person in charge of watching it or taking my phone call. Uh, how this works, Phil, you had asked if we liquefy it, do we bring it on a truck? No, there are no physical changes compared to how you receive your supply now.
Do you change meters?
No, we will use the existing meters.
You use the current meters?
Yes, and what we do is we handle, if you look at your natural gas bill currently, about eighty percent of it is the commodity itself and the interstate pipeline charges, so what it, what it costs to get your gas from the production zone to Vectren, that's the portion that you would be essentially outsourcing to Pro Alliance, and we will transport that gas through the interstate pipeline system, deliver it to Vectren, they take it from there, they own all the pipe in the ground in this area, so they will handle your local deliveries still, that's the only change you're gonna notice if you get your gas through us, is all of a sudden you're gonna have two bills, you'll have a Pro Alliance bill, which is the bulk of your natural gas, and you'll have your local delivery bill from Vectren, that's the only change you'll see.
Just for government building?
Uh, they are combining you with an existing school rate, about five years ago, Vectren created a rate for educational institutions so that if you were a K through twelve regardless of size, you could use a program like this, um, since then, there's been a lot of pressure on them to go ahead and include the county buildings as well, and you have large, in many cases, older buildings, and courthouses, jails tend to be the facilities that we're focusing on, I've taken a look at the usage at all of your meters, and I would not recommend transporting for all of them necessarily, I certainly, I can provide you the gas, but there is a seven dollar per meter per month charge for the program, and so if you just have a single water heater operating off of a small meter, there's really not as much benefit for you there. Um, the meters that I recommend purchasing for are your three largest ones, and those are gonna be your courthouse, your highway department, and your jail, and what we'll do is we'll deliver that gas to Vectren, they'll take it from there and deliver it to you. We monitor what your facilities are using to make sure that we're bringing in the proper amount of gas, and you will be pooled with our other customers in the area, Pro Alliance operates the largest supplier pool in central Indiana, so we keep you within tolerances of the utility, making sure we're bringing in the proper amount of gas compared to what you're pulling out. And based on those largest three meters, um, I've got a slide in here and I apologize for the micro print on it, um, I have two years of historical analysis for those three meters comparing Vectren's prices to what you would have paid with Pro Alliance as a NYMEX settlement price, plus the basis, I mentioned that we transported on the interstate pipeline system, and that basis is the cost of getting that gas from the production zone to central Indiana, um, and over a two-year period, this county would have saved sixty-three hundred dollars, and that includes the seven dollar per meter per month meter fees already deducted out.
Where was the fairgrounds, did you see Joe's?
Um, I don't have that with me, I think they were pretty low.
I think you might have that in there.
Okay.
What, the fairgrounds, I don't have, I don't have, they're, they're, you, they're bills, no.
It kind of depends on how your meters are there, I've taken, through the process of the Indiana County partnership, I've looked at several fairground facilities for other counties, and some of them, um, we have not decided to transport for at all, uh, just basically because of the size and the unpredictable usage, they'll only use gas for maybe two months of the year, uh, in any sizable amount, so, it depends on how your facilities meter, if you have a master meter and there's a lot of usage there, uh, we can certainly add it.
Have you, uh, contacted the school corporations?
They have been transporting, um, with a school, uh, a, a school commercial supplier for several years, um, I think Pro Alliance served them before there was a school consortium available. I do not think we are transporting to the hospital.
And private individuals, give us...
Um, if you use five thousand decatherm's over above at your house, um, you...
We've got...
The average house would use about a hundred a year.
We've got a million, we told, well, how...
Um, off the top of my head, I don't know, uh, the average home would use a hundred decatherm a year, so to get to five thousand, uh, maybe the Dilbert Mansion in Indianapolis might qualify, but that's a stretch. And basically, I, I've also included some information here about Pro Alliance and the community, some of the foundations that we support, and I've included some testimonials from other counties, and some counties have been doing this for longer than this program's been available just because, um, for example, Delaware County, their justice center and jail, that is a large enough facility that they meet that five thousand threshold, um, total across your three largest meters, we're looking at about twenty-five hundred decks a year, so they've been doing it for longer just because they met the threshold already in place. Um, basically, uh, there's, in order to get started, we'd have to have our contract signed, I forwarded that to the auditor, um, to have council review, and once that is approved, there's, you have to notify Vectren that you would be switching, for a November first start, that, those two things would need to be completed by October first, they require thirty days of notice.
Uh, you say we would still get a bill from Vectren for the delivery?
Yes.
Have you ever noticed where if this, with the switch, if they, they raise their delivery?
No, they, it's, it should be the exact same delivery fee, um, for facilities, like I mentioned Delaware County, that are over that five thousand, um, you actually get a break on your delivery fee, uh, this program and deregulation was started as a way for them to outsource their natural gas lines, so they, in a way, were incenting you to do it, but no, there are, there are no additional fees from them.
Who maintains if there's a problem in the back of this, if you have a problem, do you call Vectren or Pro Alliance?
You would, you would still call Vectren, they're handling all of your local delivery, nothing physically changes at all.
I, I favor anything you say, right, so, I would, uh, what, what do we need, uh, really to do for you, Dana?
Um, I would need your contract approval, um, does your council review that yet? Okay, um, I forward it to the auditor, it's a two-page contract, once I have your approval on that, um, I have a start approval.
The council does not approve the contracts, so it's, the contracts, only the board of commissioners can enter into contracts, so it doesn't really require any council.
Okay. Well, that's all right.
So, we have not seen the contract yet. Perhaps we can do that and, you know, have the time to review it and, uh, comment on our next meeting.
When it's, meaning in two weeks from today. Okay. Well, then you could just table this issue until then, and, uh, given approval, would you like me to come back to that meeting for any questions?
I, I will, if it's necessary.
Okay.
I, I think it's in the brain, so, I have to, I have to go forward, so, that, then your questions, well...
Well, feel free, in the meantime, you have my card and contact information, if you, um, are getting into the contract or you think about the program a little bit more and you have some additional questions, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you for the information.
Jim, did you have something you needed?
Um, no, I really didn't, I just, he's, uh, just, I don't have a permit, I'm going to need for, uh, how, would need to progress, uh, we're down to about thirty-five thousand feet of, uh, construction left, um, and we're now starting to place drops from, from the road of the people's homes, um, so that's many times one of the more concerning areas, uh, that's one real, so that's, that's two of all that I need.
And when do you anticipate, um, being finished with the building on the north?
We should, um, thirty-one...
That field or, or we have the storage?
Um, I would say within the next forty-five days, we should be done, we expect to have all of our placement done, um, certainly within seventy-five days, uh, for the, because I work, I think, in two to three months.
Greg, you'll put on the agenda then, Pro Alliance contract for the next meeting, just, uh, chance for you to contract. This is the ordinance that was read at the last commissioner's meeting, concerned the Prairie Acres, the Board of Commissioners of Tipton County, and the ordinance, two thousand and twelve, that's zero, and the ordinance establishing weight limits and prohibiting semi-tractor trailers and certain, on certain county roads, whereas the Board of County Commissioners of Tipton County, Indiana, is the governing body in charge of maintenance of all of the Tipton County roads, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners desires to establish weight limits on certain Tipton County roads, and whereas the Board of County Commissioners also desires to prohibit semi-tractor trailers on certain Tipton County roads, now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Tipton County, Indiana, section one, a person shall not operate or move upon certain Tipton County roads in vehicle of a weight that exceeds the limit set forth on a sign posted upon or at the entrances to the following roads or a part of the road that is affected, said restrictions shall apply to the following Tipton County roads located with Prairie Acres residential subdivision, Wood Drive, Wood Place, V Drive, Michael Lane, Candy Lane, Wayne Place, and Heather Place. Section two, Tipton County may act under provisions of Indiana Code ninety dash twenty dash one dash three to prohibit the operation of vehicles upon Tipton County roads or impose restrictions as to the weight of vehicles to be operated upon roads for a total period not more than ninety days, in one calendar year, when the road by any reason, deterioration, rain, snow, or other climatic conditions will be seriously damaged or destroyed without the regulation of vehicles, and such, if the, the Tipton County Highway Department shall post temporary road weight restriction signs according to requirements set forth in the Indiana Code ninety dash one, national four, three. Chief, the Tipton County roads during any period designated by the supervisor of the Tipton County Highway Department, Tipton County Commissioners, the signs shall designate the maximum permitted gross weight axle of a loaded motor vehicle that may travel on the road, section three, unless otherwise specified, the gross weight per axis of a vehicle under section two is as follows, on a blacktop road, eight thousand pounds per axle, on a travel road, eight thousand pounds per axle. Section four, a person may not operate or move upon the... Follow, follow the Tipton County roads, never fear of the, correct. Should say, a person may not operate or move upon the following Tipton County roads, a semi-tractor trailer, Wood, see, Wood Drive, Wood Place, V Drive, Michael Lane, Candy Lane, Wayne Place, and Heather Place. The provisions of this ordinance do not apply to local residential delivery vehicles, refuse, refusful trash collection trucks, when engaged with regular trash pickup, school buses, or county, county maintenance vehicles, Tipton County Sheriff's Department shall force this ordinance. Any person, firm, company, or other entity that violates the terms of this ordinance shall be subject to a penalty imposed by Tipton County in an amount not to exceed five hundred dollars for each violation. In any event, Tipton County is required to take legal action by means of injunction relief or otherwise to enforce the ordinance, and Tipton County should prevail in all legal action, when the person, firm, company, or other entity violating this ordinance shall be liable to Tipton County for all court costs and monetary fees incurred, this ordinance shall be full force in effect from and after its passage.
So, by Ray, would you be able to put signs on the entrances? If you just put those semi-tracking?
Probably, both of them have a weight limit, because it's, it's eight thousand pounds per axle.
What's the typical amount of pounds per axle on a semi? Sixteen? Okay, my question also is, uh, in the event that a semi gets to that point and sees the sign, then, where do they go? Gets to the point of the entrance of Prairie Acres, sees the sign, and they keep...
Probably back out, should back, back out, when they don't turn in.
No, I know, they won't turn in.
We're ready, yeah, it's ready. She does say, it's back out, they're walking down the county road, trying to get out.
Well, my, my point is that, when a semi, if a semi gets to that point, and they're going to traverse in the exact same group of roads that we said were not suitable for semi-tracking, which is five hundred north, five hundred west, and six hundred north.
Well, because when they get to those intersections and they can't make the turn, they know they can't make the turn, they have to go somewhere where they can make the turn. Now, different today than tomorrow, let's go on, how do we... Well, currently, in our meeting with Prairie Acres, you know, I asked how many semis currently go through Prairie Acres, and they said, no, so why all of a sudden do you think there's going to be semis trying to, to, uh, help them?
Well, there are no semis going through Prairie Acres now because there was no need for them to, because they had entrance off of thirty-one onto six hundred north to get to Miller Furniture, there was no reason for them to do that now, there is no entrance on the thirty-one to six hundred north, so that's why there were never any semis before, and why they're concerned that they're moving now, because the access to Miller Furniture is now cut off.
Who told you we would adopt the ordinance, are you okay?
Oh, I know, I know, yes, I'm okay with this, and I'm just saying that it's...
I make a motion to adopt ordinance two thousand and twelve, they show... Okay, we have motion, second on four, to adopt ordinance two thousand and twelve, dash zero, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to... It says, it says local delivery can go. It excludes what is taking place or what was happening. Same, same, same way you can take home a little garbage truck. Is that right? Or school buses that had his needs on the road. Let's look at our minutes from the last meeting with Greg. If anyone called the girls in here and they're, they're here rolling this thing, explain short of their act. I make a motion to wait acceptance notice from all of us twenty second. Question second to approve amendments as presented, all of us in favor, say aye. Aye, question aye.
Would you agree that just on the minor corrections to the substances that are pending, if you want to. We have a problem with a part-time running courthouse. So we need to discuss how we're going to handle this. But this payroll, this does not include the L last week. Okay, so takes two weeks, takes this out, that's supposed to be one twenty. Uh, but only the twenty dollars. So now we overspent since his work last week. So I mean, we can create this payroll. Cause there's still money for this paycheck, but we have to discuss what we're going to do about Jay. So while, while we had a new, we approved this payroll, which I take nine fourteen twelve, in a one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, twenty dollars for the price.
So motion second, go forward to approve payroll today. For nine fourteen in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, twenty dollars and forty-five cents, all in favor, say aye.
But, um, we need to make a decision on what we're going to do because, uh, this that we're already overspent. And. You know, this is an issue that really, if we had had the performance reviews, we sat down with the people that we supervise. This could have been probably caught. And I'm not, because I've not even shown any monitors to this. You know, the courthouse staff is under our direct supervision. So now we have a situation where there's no money because a person has been allowed, I mean, whose side is the time cards? Whose side then? You know, see, we're in charge of paying for this courthouse. So nobody, none of the missions are selling the time cards. So therefore we are not knowing how many, how many hours Jay's working. You know, why he's working more hours. I mean, we need to figure this out.
How much more is going to issue the license plate? Is it the county budget?
Uh, no, no, we have nine thousand dollars. But you know, I know what's going to happen when I notice this is that we're going to do the same lecture that Johnny got about first time help. And that knew how much he had and now it's gone. So, uh, we don't have any money to pay Jay. So we either sell him these, uh, leave him or we figure something out because we can't keep paying someone who doesn't have money and salary. No, no, we, you know, we can't transfer. Yeah, but we can't transfer anything out of our budget into courthouse, in the courthouse line. And then of course salaries are totally in charge of the council. So. We have four months. Well. Right. And that's the other thing too, is that when he takes comp time, who approves that comp time? Because why is a person taking comp time that's, you know, on a salary I earned on that certain. So she picked up thirty-two hours, which is, how about, does her use this pay thirty-two hours? Right. And she used her student comp. That means this year she's had, she's taken thirty-two hours of comp time. You know, I, you know, I, I hate to do that to somebody, but we, you know, obviously this wasn't, we can monitor him. Like the last year, well, he was up to seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. No, like he's getting quite a bit. So, right. But you know, what I'm saying is because that, that person is not monitored by anybody, then now this is. So you know, you know, you went to the last week even, that's the work last week. We, we just worked three days. We had just worked these three days. Well, I think at this point, there's no other alternative other than to tell him that he can work more than some. Well, yeah. No, I mean, typically, um, you know, I don't know that any of us had any reason to work that. But I, I got the ledger. I was looking through all the accounts, supporting the budgetarys. And that's what I noticed.
All these figures that she's looking at right?
They were at the, sorry, the ledger. Maybe the ledger. No, I think you'll hear, but we also went over last year, but it wasn't until very end of the year. But see, I also noticed that his salary was raised from nine ninety-six and eleven to eleven twenty-five Fisher. I didn't know who did that. Yeah, but I looked at the salaries, the salary ordinance and it says from seven seventy-five to eleven twenty-five maximum. That's all, that's what it just says. So they, I'm wondering who approved the eleven twenty-five increase?
Greg, you want to pass that on to Joe today?
We'll have to figure out that payment for last week. Well, Jerry wasn't sure.
I'm paying last year's and maybe a little bit last year.
We have several things to do. First one is to approve the vector one figure already. Uh, not the vector one. I just need to go about. A total of four fifty-dollar sixty-six. It's where it's. On the vector side, I sent you the email.
I make a motion to pay back from bill now. Motion second on forward to pay back the bill for applying four hundred and fifteen dollars and sixteen cents for seven hundred fifty thousand as well.
Next thing we have. You can go, you need to vote separately on this, uh, GJ pool workforce board comes in a partnership of one hundred and twenty dollars to pay for the breakfast for the widow breakfast.
Presenting, we got seven, we all wanted, we got one. Next month.
Nine, no, actually it's the end of this month, twenty-eight.
I mean, I don't know. There's twelve counties that show fourteen hundred dollars for breakfast. I go to these beans and I get nothing out of them.
I make a motion to pay the money. I have a motion second on the floor to pay the claim for the LEO elected officials' breakfast. For September tenth, I know, portion of the twenty dollars, and it's a, uh, 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 uh.
Okay, next one is, you know...
I said you can't record.
We have to make a transfer, so you guys must worry about that. The bill is in the amount of three thousand two dollars and seventy-four cents. Obviously, we have a budgetary account that's in the line, so, um, we need to transfer the most large of the places, insurance all types, into county attorney. So I need to know if you guys would approve the request for transfer of eleven three thousand two seventy-four.
Well, we got to pay it, um, we are, we're doing that transfer, we will be going around a thousand dollars to have the insurance on that. Yes, and we need to get that three thousand dollars for bills, for July. So we still have five months to go. With the county attorney, and the only place we have to go on is insurance all types, and one for having insurance. So that's another thing that we need to be proactive about this, and not the county where we have no money, you know, you know, bills. Well, I'm not challenging any of the, any of the services, like, obviously.
We want to start to ask for advertising, that's an advertising issue. How much more to ask for our, our lawyer?
You know, I would think that you would know why this bill would be on the state, here it is, like, ten percent, around a hundred bucks, a hundred dollars. Though I'm also concerned that they didn't collide all the claims, so we can't just use a jack, those miles for our slot funds. But anyway, I will, I will approve the transfer. Or I will make a motion to, uh, transfer three thousand two dollars and seventy-four cents from insurance all types to eleven twenty-one, you know, that'd be that long.
Second one, motion second on the floor to transfer three thousand two dollars and seventy-five cents from insurance all types, seventy-four. Motion to transfer three thousand two dollars and seventy-four cents from insurance all types, and then change the term of the call, say, I, 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 I.
But it's in the regular. Um, the other one that we need to, uh, red flag is the initial legal. After paying this bill, we have less than two hundred dollars left, this four months ago. So there's another we need to watch. And then also, um, uh, Jane, when we talked about that, the TDS bill, in the fifteen forty-seven seventy-nine, well, and I, and I look at this ledger just now, for, uh, telephone, we only have fourteen hundred ninety-one dollars on that, we should take. Well, we don't have enough to pay that bill. So Bill, since, I don't know why you're here, but since you are here, we're out on our own, telephone, money, money, money.
That only incident read under five dollars, I think it was, or at least seven, ten dollars. So I was gonna get it, Mr. Stevens, I need to be back to work, since how is opportunity today? And where to transfer a little bit, I was about to back it up. So we have no, so we're out of money until, Jim. Was this what you always told? Yeah, because it's due, it's on court for this, okay. So there again, that's another budgetary, I think it's.
Okay, we have a motion second on the floor to add Project 59 to our capital improvement plan in which it would be maximus. Um, I'm going to move from Project 54 to tie that to Project 59. Motion second. Thank you for saying that. I'm going to move to motion here. All right. So I'll make a motion to pay maximus of fifteen thousand for Project 59. We will motion second on the floor then to pay the maximus bill totaling fifteen thousand dollars out of our capital improvement plan, Project 59. Thank you for saying that. I'm sure you're here.
Is that just a possibility?
That's just a possibility because they were both.
I think she's.
We have received a vote for that.
They're not.
Do I ask you, have we received a vote for that?
I'm not really aware of that. What about Tony Lee building it? Uh, that is up here. The, uh, Tony Lee is a low-end disabled individual who has, uh, as a project made in semblance of a fallen soldier that he would like to donate to the courthouse. The commissioners have the authority to accept donations and so his request is is that the courthouse take accept this donation for use in the courthouse lawn for special occasions such as for veterans day, Fourth of July, and similar occasions. They had talked to Bill Steen Senior and his suggestion would be that only be if it's approved, be displayed at daytime and removed in the evening so as to avoid the possibility of damage.
You're just giving projects.
Yes, there will be an easel built to display them. It's interesting, but add easel to that. And, uh, this is all the other things.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from Tony Lee and let Mr. Bill Steen Senior be in charge of it for display during the memorial or such a thing as being. We have a motion second on the floor to accept Tony Lee's donation, a fallen soldier. We are going to put that in charge. Mr. Senior, do you oversee that? That goes in favor. I, I. Motion carries.
Jason, are, are you here? Okay. Um, I just had wondered about if you had ever done a cost benefit analysis on the Ford Festival. Um, and I'll preface that by saying that I know that a lot of people spend a lot of hours volunteering and if you're going to invest that much of your time to implement it for volunteerism, there has to be some sort of reward at the end. And so, um, I think in the four years of the Ford Festival now for me, there's been just one year that someone from the group, which at that time was Dave Culver, brought us a, like a, showed us to be able to quantify how the benefit, benefits meaning. And, um, the reason this was brought to me as far as a question, it wasn't just this year particularly because of the weather and all, but, um, several people have asked me too, you know, what is the benefit? And it'd be easy for us to justify, we knew, we saw that, we explained, because from accounting, people probably don't realize, see, that from accounting standpoint for our finances, everyone also needs to realize that we pay all the county employees to have that day off Friday. Okay? So that costs the county thirteen thousand dollars just for them to have that day off. And, you know, I'm certainly not going to go through this list of telling you, you know, what all people said, but we certainly share that with you privately for your group. But just from the accounting grounds too, the complaints I heard were the cars on the sidewalk and that they had to wheel people, volunteers in the soggy grass while their free car still on the front lawn, you know, those type of things. So I just think that if this is going to continue, it would be very beneficial to show the commissioners why this is a good thing for the people. So that we're able to, to address these complaints.
Sure.
And, and I'll tell you that the courthouse employees probably are the biggest contributors with party, obviously, and with cost because it's hard on Thursday, but it was also post office people, you know. So I think that it would be really, really helpful in your committee meetings if you could do a little bit of a promotion, if you will, of why we're doing this. Because if the cost outweighs the benefit, then there really isn't any reason to do that.
Right. I understand that, uh, I think this is 44th Ford Festival and, uh, Dave and Tina Culver, so David was the last general manager, they do not have a general manager anymore, who's the central court of contact anymore. Uh, but I can get whatever presentation David presented, because he is still on the concession side. Uh, but just as you say, um, cost, cost, benefit, you know, obviously it's been a tradition of starting 44 years ago. As you travel throughout the state and most people have heard of the festival, can't really say of anything else, um, county's really known for, and I know it's going to large amount, but, um, for instance, this year it is dependent on whether the preliminary numbers obviously on the Ford Festival, somewhere around twelve, thirteen thousand dollar loss because there was no sales Friday night because of the weather. Saturday was a great day, Thursday was a nice day, but it's really dependent enough. People don't realize that. And, and whenever I was president, we did present a full ledger specifically to the county and specifically to the city on cost expenditures. People don't understand tents cost sixteen thousand dollars each. And all the revenue they get is from concessions, spots that they rent out there, those were two hundred and seventy-five dollars. That's not near enough, that would be sixteen thousand dollars worth of tents on the chair for like the people on those ones. So even after, um, in an informal meeting with the officers yesterday during cleaning up, you know, they're looking at options and they'd love to hear from the, from the public. One of the options would be to do completely away with the food tent, the port tent. So that risk financially is not borne by the Ford Festival or look to have it actually catered. So those people, like shoots, I believe they did something, there was discussion by some, and none as stone, but there was discussion regarding, could they accommodate, provide all the food, provide all this, but there's, you're right, there's nobody that receives any, any compensation with the volunteers up at the festival. And in fact, they handed out five hundred meal tickets for people to volunteer to serve the food. You know, if you look at eight dollars each, that's four thousand dollars. That's something that could be eliminated, actually, save costs. But other than, um, what the benefit is, other than really since whoever started it back forty-four years ago, um, they've just kept perpetuating it. But I heard twice yesterday that the business model, if you've lost money three years in a row, or three rain days last year, it's something, obviously it can't be sustained because they've got to pay McFarland for the food, this, this, and this. So there's going to be discussions, there's going to be change in officers this year, reelections, um, treasurer, whoever else wants to step in. And definitely, you know, I'd like a list of those things. I know, um, Mr. Purnat came in here and asked that those vehicles up there, obviously I can't move the vehicles.
No, but I'm.
Better, better those vehicles are still sitting there than to move two days to lost or extra money.
Well, why were they in the audit though? We approved them to be on the sidelines.
I can't.
Yes, to see, but, but again, you know, since, and I don't want even the perception even be that, you know, Jane Harper's in this Ford Festival, that is not it. I'm just saying to you that since the county has an investment, not only our property, but also thirteen thousand dollars in lost wages, then I think that's something that the community just needs to look at is, does, and, and all the volunteer hours that all those people do, I think they hope that there's a benefit for them doing it. If there isn't, why do it? So, I mean, I even heard one person say, I'd rather donate the money than have to be here and work. So anyway, something that you might think about, but I, I certainly appreciate anyone that volunteers for community cause and, but after last weekend, I think we have to be more forthcoming about what the, what the cause is, what the benefit is.
Right.
Maybe you guys are more evaluating that too.
Right, yeah. Definitely we're always looking at safe, uh, I would say money, you know, most of the people, they utilize this and, and for experience, they're making fundraiser for a year, junior class coming up, um, the weekends, they, they make money else, a lot of them use it for weather. So, uh, yeah, it's, it's definitely can be a distraction for downtown for sure, especially, you know, our office, obviously that whole week was light, traffic in the buildings is light. I should say, people wanted to do county businesses, like that. And I, and I, you guys are the ones that set the schedule on what days we get off. But I, I thought there was one that we trade off for, that we usually have on January perhaps, um, or the thirteenth day, which was, which is a national holiday, that maybe they trade that one off.
Maybe we could consider doing that because, you know, like the city employees don't get the day off, you know, right? But, you know, the other thing too, as far as this being the business center of the county, it's not just three days, it's really.
Oh, yeah, it is.
Really, it's, we have last month here signed, it's no longer just days.
Right, yeah.
It's really vulnerable, it's a disruption.
But, yeah, the, the whatever list.
I will, I, I don't want to verbalize all these numbers, but I will talk to you privately.
Because I'll have a wrap-up meeting in October and anybody wants to talk to me, the officers, I'm going to be jacked and then obviously I'll just knock back. And myself.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks.
Well, I come to talk to you about the grant, because I did ask Andrew Pearsford Schneider to kind of talk about it too, because you probably know a little bit more about my idea.
Well, yes, Jim Sparks, did you guys get to know the weekend?
Yeah, that was too much stuff to digest.
Okay.
Well, those nine attachments were, that's why I was hoping that maybe we could get up. Yeah, sure, sure. And, and like I said, I, it was made out to the commissioners and I just received it. So I felt, well, nobody said anything to me, so I, I just, Greg, you know, Jim, can I call? Andrew, I didn't even see if he could be here because like I said, uh, you know, he can explain to you about the grant itself, you know, it's six thousand dollars that the county can use for the purpose and also authorize receiving the Schneider to, I have the sign and I wanted to talk to you, you know, before. I want to kind of turn it over to Andrew and let him kind of explain what's going on.
Well, basically, the, uh, the grant funds, Tipton County's participated in the past. What is this, uh, I think three years, three or four years ago, the state and Homeland Security worked together and they came out with this fund basically to harvest the county's GIS data into a statewide forum. So what they have is the Indiana map, but then Homeland Security also utilized that data for, you know, basically disaster sound. So if a tornado came through or something like that, they had your data so that they could react to it. So that was their initial funding. Now, uh, the Indiana map is where all these counties statewide data sets get placed, where everyone can harvest it. So basically it becomes open, freely accessible to anyone out there. And so what Jim Sparks has done, he's worked with, uh, virtually that, I think it's more of a linky or proportion of the contract, which is a contract between Tipton County and the state of Indiana to share that data. And in return, uh, the state is going to give Tipton County six thousand dollars over three years, uh, for that data. And so, um, and of course, the backside of that is it has to have a service set up so that the data can be pushed to the state. So that's what we come to do. So that's a service we provide, uh, and because we're already harvesting all the data from the Indiana, we set it up in the background. It doesn't take the whole six thousand dollars to do that from our side, it's three thousand dollars, uh, for three years. So that's a total. And so that leaves three thousand dollars left for you guys to, you know, utilize for other purposes. I assume that when you use it, it will maintain key layers there. So, um, I think the state, they've been trying to push the information out. I know it is a lot of information out on the other side, but they've been hounding us because Tipton County and Homeland Schneiders, uh, where they're wanting data, because we had to shut the services off, we have, and we're pretty, so they're wanting to know that you gave the data sets out. So that's kind of why I pushed the information back out, just to remind them.
Do we need to enter a contract?
Yeah, it's a, yeah, this is, it's a, it's a data exchange agreement, um, between the Indiana Office of Technology and Tipton County. And it is, you know, fairly lengthy, um, and it's working on the side. Basically what they're saying is you're providing an open source, uh, web feature service for that to acquire the framework data that we're looking for. The framework data is pretty well outlined from here, but it's, it's basically your, your, they want your address information, your partial data, um, your, obviously your local government boundary information, and then the screen line, uh, so kind of core data pieces that you see throughout. And then they'll look at their own data sets and do things on top of that on the other side.
So how long have you been disconnecting?
Uh, not too long, maybe two or three months. Um, you know, just, they, what had happened was initially the state had done something and disconnected their, their connection between the two, and then, um, our developers figured that out and fixed it for the state, but then, of course, that sparked, hey, are all the agreements put in place? And so Jim sent out a listing of the agreements that a bunch of people sort of proposed. So, so.
The grant is a given? The grant is a.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, um, there, there, the best of my knowledge, there's no matching or anything like that. It's, initially it was three years ago, I think they gave you close to fifteen thousand dollars for it. Uh, I don't think he was able to come up with that same kind of funds. Uh, so the pros of it are obviously that if something happens, they have your data and they can react. So like down in Clark County, when the tomatoes went through, that's out, you know, they had information so they could respond to it, which is nice. The negatives, of course, are, um, it's not a lot of resource for the amount of effort on the access to the GIS system. And so that was, um, three years ago, I think that was the push we saw from all the counties was, you know, we spent a lot of time money building this system and now the state wants it for, you know, a long time. So, so those are the, I guess, the only negatives outside of the other way down.
What was it, three thousand? We signed that contract, we already three thousand, right?
Well, yeah, and, and we, yeah, we, and so the, but the state, yeah, it's kind of, it's over three years, so it is a little complicated. And we, you know, obviously Tipton's been a great behind bars for years, and so, um, we would work with you so we can invoice, um, there's a, you know, a sequence of how it gets invoiced, but they'll only pay two thousand dollars a year, so we can invoice two thousand dollars for the first, and the next thousand dollars the following year.
That's interesting. Two thousand dollars. Right. Your, yours, Linda?
I'll write that to our people. That's kind of that's.
And you already have appropriated it.
Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, I do, but I, you've got so much that I have that extra few that's outside, you know, the professional.
You go. You're looking at the whole test. So you have to make, uh, wait five days for that.
When do, when do the grant release come?
Well, yeah, I talked with Jim Sparks, who's the State Geographic Information Officer, and basically the county will invoice the state. So as soon as you invoice the state, um, they'll go like your, I don't know what that takes.
I have kept the signature before, you didn't need that.
Right. So, so that's what this document is, the first one, the, the data exchange agreement. He said the EBS number they will assign when they get the document, um, they just need this signed off by the, by the commissioners. So once they receive that, then basically the agreement's in place, uh, and then you guys can invoice the state for your side of things. We need the authorization received because everything we do, um, we don't release your data unless we have an agreement for it. And so that really authorizes us to do it, um, and sets, of course, the, the costs for them and that for you guys on that side. So, so your side is with the state, we'll sign this off, um, once they execute on their side and send you back, and you guys can invoice them, um, and then, you know, it'll be pretty quickly, they'll, they'll write you two thousand dollars. The thing to remember though, and I don't know how you do this, um, on the side of the auditor's office, we'll have to remember next year to invoice the state again, and then the following year to invoice the state, you know, it's different, something builds out.
Good, that's good. I, I'm writing it down as we speak. With a big asterisk inside.
Yeah, so every year, um, I'm seeing it this time.
And they're not going to send us those, they have to be.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, like, I mean, maybe they would, but.
Probably not. We don't send money out, we don't have this.
Right, right. Linda, this is something you want, right?
Yes. When, uh, when, whatever it is.
I'll make a motion to re.
So, yeah, this was the state, and this is the.
I'll make a motion, we, we. Data exchange agreement. Sorry.
What does this?
That's the, the Indiana Office of Technology.
Okay.
I'll, I'll move, and we, we're going to the data exchange agreement, between the Indiana Office of Technology and Tipton County, and has discussed and put a recommendation of accessory involved.
So, your motion second on the floor, they may have this agreement, uh, with different county, and the state, Indiana, data exchange agreement. All those papers, they have. Motion carries. One more, let's get this one signed first.
I don't know what you're doing here.
I don't know.
Just playing back your vacation day on this. I'll, I'll move, they'll be assigning authorization to proceed, to proceed with project named GIS Web Feature Services, shooting the amount of three thousand dollars.
So, I'm on a motion second on the floor to enter into this agreement with Schneider, the GIS Web Feature Services, and now three thousand dollars. Motion second on the floor, say hi.
Hey.
Motion carries.
As a side note, I was doing some research on your beacon portal, and you guys have now gone over the million request information, so you're about one point two million requests from the president.
I've had realtors tell me that they, we, we, they like our side, you know.
Because it's a one-page thing, you have to look through it, but there.
I know some other counties out there who then discontinued the service, so they're going to update up to like to, like the meeting.
Right. Lord appreciate it, Mary. All who should be impressed.
Yeah, well, it's because of the, well, we're trying to get that part out. They're good for you. I have a blitzer in the line.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
I, I wonder, um, that's what you talked about, um, last time we approved this bill for like seventeen hundred and twenty dollars to life insurance for the liability. And, and talking with Al Statewood County, we, we, you know, we did it, we are not supposed to approve something ahead of the services. In other words, we need to have a contract with them before we do that because he said it's like Tipton County Board of Commissioners bought liability insurance for the board directors of the Tipton County Foundation because they're not even, oh, it's worse than that because they're not even formed yet. So it's going to look like we paid a bill ahead of them even becoming incorporated or whatever, or waiting asking us for a contract. So we need to, your alliance needs to be, or something needs to happen before any of this can happen again, like if there's any money to pay out. Because he said you just can't pay ahead of services. So.
They, they are real close with the contract, so if they give the contracts, if they ever ready, they will, they call it, they'll, they'll, it's something that should be resolved.
So you do not anticipate any more costs from them?
I should be.
Okay. Let's see, then that's, because it's going to look like on the post that, that we paid instead of them paying their liability. So it's just something that's going to have to be explained. Then the, the other thing I want to bring up is this contract we have with all state for their services for the twenty-five hundred dollars for three meetings. Did we ever get the three meetings?
I have to ask, how much have they told me?
Well, it says in the contract that we will provide the meeting notes of the, of the meeting consulted by all state two board commissioners, and I never had anything. So there again, this was a, a thing where we approved a payment ahead of the services being rendered. So, you know, we need to, in the future, make sure that, that those types of actions don't happen because it could send a scrutiny with, uh, speaking of accounts. So I, I'd like to know for Dick, you know, where the meeting notes are for the twenty-five hundred dollars. I think Jim, you were kind of on that, where you wanted to, to make sure we're going to be public and, you know, would we be informed of when they are? And I would move one if the foundation can.
Ever heard anything about the meeting? No?
Yeah, I have something of, you, you guys are all down here.
The meeting's not ended, but go ahead.
Well, that's what I like, bring something to you. Just got a, two months ago, we asked about, I don't know how long ago, I feel like months, but we talked about a generator that could get it connected to run the health department during, uh, and I sent out letters to three different companies and just got a word from one of them. And they talked to, uh, came in and hooked it, hooking up our generator, uh, so that we could run the health department in case there's a power outage. It's a little steep for us to foot that bill, wondering if we could.
How are that? That's a little bit.
Yep, yeah, you'd have to have a key to get in. But in case, in case a tornado went and hit, or out of power for the next number of days, and we got to do death certificates and.
Yeah, we're placing that.
Is this in your vote?
And, uh, it's not in our vote to have all that. We, we have a, a grant that we could probably take care of about half of that, we could make, make borrow and get half of it from somewhere else.
I'm looking to see what we have in.
We could, they, they borrow and get half of it from somewhere else.
I'm looking to see what we have in, or else we're very.
You guys are the money expert, nobody. Oh, I'm sorry.
Noel, I'm looking at this, for this, I noticed that on our last legal bill, we had several March ticket items for health department issues. But just wondering, could you, would you be able to bring us up to date on the status of those cases?
We're trying to do that downstairs now. He would just put a phone call into the lawyer's office.
Oh, to find out?
To find out what we were getting billed for and what kind of work he did for us.
Oh, okay. Well, if I, I do know they, we, I think we all.
I, I think she, she got one thing that, and she was looking at it. And it still wasn't enough information for her to decide who and what it was for.
Well, um.
I think, but I, you know, I guess we're not, it appeared to her every time Christine made a phone call to the lawyer, he billed us $300. And that was pretty inordinate, in my opinion, for a phone call.
That's a lot of talking.
Uh, that's a lot of talking, and I don't know what all it was. He was looking at that, trying to find out.
He had the time he spent on it, but.
But she has a copy of that, of what he's trying to. Okay, because we have, yeah. Okay, on this, Noel, so the $9,500, so you're looking, you think that perhaps you could find five?
Yes.
You're looking for $4,500?
Yes.
And, and this is a, something that would last a long time?
Long as that generator's still running. And, and the way, uh, way we want it to work is so that we could get that generator stored outside. So it's not, because it's a gas generator, don't want it stored inside. So we can connect, wheel it up, connect it, start it, plug it in, and we're the health department's help angle. And that's, and I don't know what, I mean, he tried to explain to me what all it had to entail to do that. There has to be some sort of a relay box put in so that it, with the generator, it doesn't go back into the main line.
That was first.
I don't know enough about.
Is it going to be automatic or manual?
It, the, the switch would be manual. And we'd have to get that generator plugged in.
Is this the old generator you used to have in that area?
No, this is another one. We made a deal with the fire department, a little bit smaller, but capable of running a.
Off the product and stationary model.
That'd probably make more money, the way it sounded to me, if we did that. We, we talked about.
Where do you know store?
That, we're, we're still trying to figure out the best place to do that. We talked about, like, out, just outside that, one of the windows there, the health department goes, would be easier access. But then, of course, our concern, or your concern, would be, you know, what's that going to look like? And if our people don't get into it, break into it, we'd have to cover it so it's, you know, out of the weather. We also talked about that little block, just not covered or anything, but the compressors and things that are out there, we could store it there, wheel it out, bring it around, and start it and plug it in. I don't know whether we'd need a concrete slab to just pour so we could let it sit there while we're running or not. I don't know that much about safety and whether that has to happen. Storing it inside is, inside the courthouse, I think, is not the way to go because of that gasoline. We need to figure out the easiest, cheapest way to get it to our area. I mean, if you're, it would be all right with us putting it outside there in the winter. I don't know whether the law says it's got to be so far away from the building, the structure. I, that's, I'm going to leave that up to the electrician to do that.
This would just be for that one office?
Just for our, yeah, that's just for our office. And when he, when he was looking at that, he said he was amazed that we didn't have some sort of emergency generator power for the courthouse already.
Is this correct, the labor?
Yeah, the labor is quite expensive. I guess there's a lot of running back and forth. Because they got, because number one, they got to separate all of the lines that's going into the health department, bring it back, bind it to that relay, and.
What's the price for the actual generator?
For the what? Oh, the generator is ours. We have the generator.
Oh, okay.
We have the generator. It's this, the conduit and stuff, and then that panel, that transfer switch is the only, only thing. But the big chunk is the labor to get that wired up, wired it up, wired up properly.
Wired it up, there you go, or something. Actually, I'm trying to find out, Jim, if she's trying to like, is that straight off the generator? And they would have to physically unplug everything. We're going to have to physically unplug it.
Yeah, I sent out one to Peters Electric and Everton.
Dave, I will have to ask this guy from, of course.
Archer?
What's Dave's name?
Archer.
Yeah, Dave Archer, he has the source of it already.
He might.
Helen?
He might also get one from Greg's, I'll be able to.
This is.
That's this Greg's.
This is Greg's.
And Greg's, yeah.
I know Greg, I know Greg has.
I don't know what kind of.
I know, I'm glad that those two that they have, that several, I know Dave Archer has some.
Noel, your plan right now, though, is, in this event, is to just transport it to the hospital, is that clear?
Yeah, no, the hospital's not inviting us out there now.
I, I thought that if we made this move, you know, Penny was coordinating that, that they had, as a courtesy, they had said that if they had a power loss, they would take the vaccines.
I have never heard that statement.
Oh, that's, I, I specifically remember that because I asked about that. So like, right now, if we had a power outage for two days, do you have no plan?
We have nothing, no place to go. But as far as I know, the only place that's got generators would be the jail in 911 Center.
And the hospital.
And the hospital.
Okay, so what would be your thoughts about having a cooperative agreement with the hospital?
They've got a spot for it, and they'd let us out there.
We didn't store.
We could work from anyplace, but it'd be better, easier if we didn't have to pick up all our computers and.
Well, no, I, I didn't really mean that. I meant, I, I thought that your main concern was the loss of, of the medicines.
Well, right, that, that's a big deal, that hits on that, all of that medicine that's there. We got a great big freezer that we bought with our grant money a year and a half ago, something like that, a year.
Well, I mean, my suggestion is, if, in short of cooperating with the hospital, if you absolutely, if you decide that this is a necessity, we do have CCD money that is capital improvement, and if something's going to be here forever, then you can look at that plan. I'm not sure if it does the R or whatever, but, I mean, as far as you guys being not able to work, that would affect everybody. I mean, that's affecting every office.
Right, right. And if it's just a power outage like ice storm, it's not such a big deal. But if it's a power outage due to a tornado, we got deaths, and we got owner wanting us to get death certificates out, and we have no way to, but that's all done electronically now. We got to have those computers up and running to data function.
Well, there's a couple of.
Yeah, but it gets computers running, you're going to have that power control. It's more than just.
Right, right, yeah, there's got to be services available somewhere.
We'd have to power to the server here, is what you're saying, so that's the.
So that would be another server that we have to run. Server's up on a virtual and false. So that's something else you need to, for computers, you're going to have some.
So what do you mean to do and say, and go from here? Go back to Greg?
Yeah, they, they definitely need the service.
Right, I need to contact this gentleman and try for another one?
I will, you know, county has the source. I think that we probably have to go to the council too.
Sounds like we're going to have to go to the council for several things, for the lawyer money and everything.
I agree, so. Well, go ahead and take this case that she has trouble with, maybe call her down later, or if we have.
Helen?
Can you read the minutes?
Do what?
You approve the minutes, make motion second if you approve them.
I have no idea about that.
She said she was going to make corrections after that.
No, it's not like that, we're, we're pointing, like, that's what S. Allen said.
Now, once, once you approve them, you make your second, you make your motion, that's what your minutes are.
Okay.
The correction should never be made, I don't think, after your motions.
I'll approve it, and then we, uh, we send that motion and approve the minutes with corrections, spelling errors.
I'd like to see the correction, just another error, I have a problem. It's another correction besides that, I see where you make a correction.
I'm only talking about.
Always, but, okay, I'll see. Motion second on the floor, we send the motion to approve the minutes as written and accept the minutes without spelling corrections. Those papers that have to bring up, I should hear.
The situation brought up, the chief of labor, who is in charge of setting how many pages of their employees are not?
Well, in that case, where he's a part of the employee and he's going to take care of.
Well, Bob, it looks to me like Tipton will be getting 20 hours a week consistently. So the manager opens the doors and, I don't know who for the pay raise, I don't know who tells them when to work because there is no supervision.
And the employees? And the questions I've got. So you guys don't do that part?
Motion number two, motion second on the floor, general, papers say aye. David will be home, I'll be there.